Hey, we'll give it one last check. Y'all can hear me? Can y'all hear me?
One minute to nine.
We can hear you.
You can?
Yes, and it's 9:01, 9:01.
Yeah, I just, I just lost you guys a minute ago, so we'll see how this goes.
Joe's ready to be your backup.
Okay. Are we ready to roll?
We are.
Alrighty. Well, perfect. Good morning. Today is November 2nd, 2021, and this is a regular scheduled meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Due to issues arising from COVID-19, the board is using a WebEx teleconferencing format for today's meeting, and may be participating via the World Wide Web. If you'd like to make a public comment through the teleconferencing format today, please make sure that you are identified by name in the WebEx system. For those interested in commenting during unscheduled appearances at 9:00 a.m., please use the Raise Your Hand feature and wait to be recognized. You will be allowed up to two minutes for public comment. Members in the audience who have filed, uh, filled out speaker cards will be taken in the order they were received by the clerk, and the online speakers will be taken in the order they appear in the WebEx system, showing that their hand is up. If you wish to speak today and are having issues with the Raise Your Hand feature, please physically raise your hand so we may see you and then wait to be recognized. Each vote today will be a verbal or voice vote, so that members of the public can hear how each board member has voted. After we have had a motion and a second regarding each item we're taking up today, there will be a roll call vote by district. With that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Here.
Richard Valley?
Here.
Doug Verboon is absent. Craig Peterson?
Here.
Richard Fagundes?
Here.
Okay, so we have four present, one absent. Uh, with that, we'll move to, uh, the invocation and supervisor Nevs, are you willing to do that?
Yeah, thanks. Please join me in prayer as, uh, we gather today and plan out, uh, our, our today and week and month. Uh, we are getting closer to the holiday season, wrapping up another year, so I just want to thank everyone for all of their hard work, efforts, and certainly wish to, uh, wish everyone happiness and health as we, uh, wrap up 2021. With that, thank you very much. Amen. And now join me as we honor America while you're reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, very good. Thank you. Um, can you guys hear me? Okay, I'm getting a little bit digitized on this end. Okay, uh, with that, we'll move to item two, which is unscheduled appearances. Any person may direct, uh, directly address the board at this time on items on the agenda or any other item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Two minutes are allowed for each item. Madam Clerk?
I do have a speaker card from Jamie Tam. If you'd come forward, please.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jamie Tam, President of the Kings County Detentions Deputy Association, Sergeant in the Kings County Jail. I'm here today to represent a little over a hundred members. Since we've last had a significant contract about 2016, 17, a lot has changed and evolved. We know that the decisions you make on a daily basis are not easy, and I'm here to express our gratitude and express the potential positive impact of the new contract. Working at a detention facility takes a special person, and it is not for the faint of heart. While we do not push a patrol car, the job with an arrestee doesn't end after someone is placed in handcuffs. Arrestees are not just from the sheriff's office, but agencies within our county, neighboring counties, and CDCR. Detention deputies and technicians must ensure that inmates are protected and cared for throughout their judicial process. A day in the life of a detention deputy and technicians presents many physical and mental challenges, challenges that some would never experience in their lifetime. We are often cussed at, berated, faced with physical altercations, and exposed to bodily fluids that do not belong to us. With the realignment, we are housing even more sophisticated inmates and inmates with mental health issues. Because of this, we have seen an increase in deputy assaults, which has resulted in permanent disability and early retirements. With already low staffing levels in COVID-19, the risks of being infected by the virus are high, and the concerns of the risk of us taking it to our families are worrisome. But we continue to adapt and overcome to ensure the safety and security of the facility and meet the standards that are required by the Board of State of Corrections to operate. Our members continue to demonstrate professionalism under trying of circumstances. We demonstrate humanity towards people who many others cannot sympathize with or even fear. Our membership has faced extreme adversity, and through these challenges, we have demonstrated our dedication to our agency and the county we serve. However, we are still lacking in staffing and have issues retaining staff. With this new contract, it is our hope we continue to be at the top of competing with other agencies. We hope to retain and gain staff to support the goals and mission of our agency. This will ultimately create a safer work environment and reduce liability for the department and thus our county. Members have often felt like they were unseen and forgotten. In the past two weeks, our members have felt heard and recognized for their role and job duties in law enforcement. The ratification of our contract has made significant change, boosted morale, and restored hope. Today, I am truly honored to represent and work alongside a group of the fine men and women who have entrusted me to be their voice, to be their voice. On behalf of the Kings County Detentions Deputy Association, I'd like to thank the members of the board and our command staff, Captain Thomas, Assistant Sheriff Putnam, and our Sheriff Dave Robinson, for your leadership, support, and commitment to us, to the members of the board, and to Ms. Ring and her team. Thank you for hearing our voices, and over the years, you've kept your word to us, and today is actually a really, really great day for us. We believe that this contract is just the beginning, and together, alongside our community leaders, we are headed in the right direction in serving our community. Thank you from all of us at the Kings County Jail. Thank you so very much. I should.
Thank you.
Good morning, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I just wanted to update you. This week again, the DA's office has 1,200 hearings going in court. We have one jury trial that selection is going on now for a qualified jury. Last week, we were able to conclude a very serious domestic violence case with guilty, another guilty verdict, which, um, we've been lucky to get enough jurors to perform at least one jury trial a week. So unless you have any questions, that's the brief update on the DA's office.
Thank you.
Cody, can you hear us? We're ready for you.
Yes, I did. Sorry, I couldn't hear you for a minute. Good morning, Chairman, Board of Supervisors, Cody Pennington with Veteran Services. As Veterans Day fast approaches, we just wanted to make sure that you continue to be made aware of any events taking place in your local community. Last week, Scott shared with you two events, the American Legion Hanford Post 3 Veterans Day Ceremony at the Hanford Cemetery and the VFW Veterans Festival at Centennial Park, both taking place at 10:00 a.m. We also received word that the American Legion Lemoore Post 100 will be hosting their 8th Annual Veterans Day Parade beginning at 6:00 p.m. We will continue to keep you informed of any additional Veterans Day events. Um, thank you for your consistent support of our local veterans, and have a good morning.
Um, that's all I have. Chairman Peterson, I'm not sure if we still have you online.
You do. All right, uh, with that, we'll move to item three, which is, uh, approval of the minutes. We'll start with report out of the closed session from October 26.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your board took no reportable actions during closed session last week.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to, uh, item 3B, which is approval of the minutes from the October 26, 2021 regular meeting. Word, what's your pleasure?
Nev seconds.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Craig Peterson?
Hi.
Richard Fagundes?
Okay, we have four in favor, one absent. Let's see. We'll now move to the consent calendar and board. Uh, you have that in front of you. What's your pleasure?
Nev's moves.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Craig Peterson?
Hi.
Richard Fagundes?
Okay, we have four in favor, one absent. Motion carries. We'll now move to, uh, item five, which is regular agenda items, and, uh, just for information purposes, item 5B1 has been pulled. And, uh, so we'll start with, uh, item 5A. Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Bill Lynch, Kings County Fire Department. Here today, uh, with an item for your approval, which is the automatic aid agreement between the Kings County Fire Department and Corcoran State Prison. Um, as you know, we've had a relationship with both prisons within the county, um, and have had the fortunate opportunity to have them help us with, uh, suppression activities in both in Corcoran and in Avonale. This, this contract we're talking about today deals just with Corcoran. Um, the prison does a fantastic job in supporting us and augmenting us with, uh, fire response and, excuse me, emergency medical aid response in the city of Corcoran. Um, this is kind of a housekeeping item where we'd like to come back and review these agreements every three or four years. Uh, some of the names and faces have changed with the city of Cor, or excuse me, with Corcoran Prison, and some of our names and faces have changed. So, um, I would respectfully ask that you approve this agreement, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thanks, Chief. Um, any questions from the board?
Questions, comments, move, approve? Nev seconds.
Okay, we have, uh, motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Craig Peterson?
Hi.
Richard Fagundes?
Thank you. Okay, it sounds like, um, I, I didn't catch, uh, Supervisor Fagundes's, but it sounded like a yes. Uh, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so we have four in favor, one absent. We'll now move to item 5C from the Public Health Department.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board.
Good morning.
I'm got everything together here. Apologies. Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, Darcy Pickens, Public Health. As a reminder, our daily numbers are on our website, and I'd like to note this morning that Public Health will be transitioning to an updated website later this week, with an expected release of tomorrow or Thursday. Included in that update are three COVID dashboards with data on cases, vaccines, and deaths, as well as updated resources and current scheduling information for Health Department services, including COVID and flu-specific vaccine clinics. A press release on this change is forthcoming. We've made a few larger changes to our vaccine schedule in this past week, so those have been solidified, and, uh, we hope to, to release tomorrow. We continue to have daily communication with the hospital. A resource request was submitted for three respiratory therapists, which was approved by the state, so we can hope to see those staff as early as this week. We have seen a small drop in hospitalizations this week. As of November 1st, the local hospital had 44 patients, patients, excuse me, in MedSurg and five in the ICU. Of those admitted, 29 are Kings County residents. Since July 1st, 89% of those hospitalized have been, bless you, unvaccinated. 11% have been vaccinated. These percentages have remained stable over the past month. Our PPE status has not changed. We are still maintaining a 60-day supply of PPE for our healthcare facilities. COVID testing continues to be offered through our clinics and mobile unit with 1,922 tests collected last week. We highly encourage those with symptoms or known exposure to COVID-19 to test, and of course, please stay home if you are sick. We had 352 new cases last week. This is a slight dip, putting us lower than we've seen in recent weeks, and bringing our new case count since the start of the current surge to 7,562 cases. Cases among all age groups appear relatively stable at the moment, so we hope that that trend continues. Our Delta variant case count is three, is at 324, and there are currently 123,411 reported cases of the Delta variant in California. Last week, Public Health administered 517 vaccines. This is an increase and due largely in part, uh, or due largely, excuse me, to an increase in demand for booster shots. We saw a big increase in demand last week for boosters. So far, Kings County providers have administered 119,235 vaccines specifically to county residents. We have 8,609 partially vaccinated residents, 57,367 fully vaccinated residents. Our current breakthrough rate remains at 1.8% of our vaccinated population, a marker indicating the vaccine is indeed effective. Today, November 2nd, the CDC is expected to review data on the safety and efficacy of the Pfizer vaccine in children ages 5 to 11, which was granted preliminary approval by the FDA last week. If the final recommendation is granted by the CDC, we will review and implement eligibility guidelines to begin vaccination as early as this week. The exact timing will depend in part on my turn functionality and what those eligibility requirements are. If they're more complex, it'll take us a little more time to roll out. We'll want to make sure everybody knows exactly who is eligible once we get that, that word from CDC. In anticipation of approval for vaccine, for pediatric, the pediatric vaccine, the state will be changing the way vaccine coverage rates are reported. So I just want to give you a heads up about this because it will be a fairly significant change. Right now, the eligible population used to calculate vaccination rates includes residents 12 years in the age, 12 years of age and older. That's everyone who's eligible for a vaccine as of today. On or around November 10th, we've heard both November 10th and November 12th, the calculation will change to reflect the total number of vaccinated individuals out of residents five years and older. So that eligible population grows, which will, will result in a decrease in our vaccination rate. So it's going to look like, for some reason, our rates just plummeted, even though we will have the same number of people vaccinated. So again, just a heads up that that change is coming, and we will include a disclosure statement on the website to let people know why, uh, why they're seeing the difference. Cases and hospitalizations do remain higher than we'd like, but again, we're hopeful that the worst of this surge is behind us, and the progress we've, we've made as a community will continue. As mentioned last week, now is not the time to drop protective measures we have available, so please continue to use the tools we all have to keep ourselves, our friends, and our family healthy this winter season. COVID and flu vaccination, frequent hand washing, staying home when you're sick, staying hydrated, and wearing a mask. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Darcy. Questions from the board?
Good report, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Hey, with that, yes, go ahead.
Sorry, Ed Hill, CAO, just wanted to get a, uh, weekly update, uh, on the status of the Kings County employees and the COVID. Uh, since the outbreak began, we've had, or the most recent outbreak, excuse me, we've had 182 cases, and we currently have approximately 45 individuals either quarantined or teleworking.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, any questions from the board on that? Okay, uh, with that, we'll move to, uh, board member comments, and, uh, we'll start with Supervisor Valley.
Hey, good morning, Mr. Chair. Thank you. A couple of things. Um, the, as you know, a couple of weeks ago, the board, we voted to send a letter to the California Citizens Redistricting Commission, and that letter had the concerns on the city of Corcoran being split in half and put in two different assembly districts. So yesterday, uh, the, um, the, the redistricting, uh, commission, they're continuing on with their hearings. They met, I believe, every day last week. And so yesterday, they released a new map, and the new map, um, now has Kings County, uh, Ho in one district. But, uh, the map also changed where, uh, last week, the, uh, the new assembly district was showing Kings County on the southern border of this, of this assembly district extending north into Fresno County. Now this map has Kings County, um, on the west side of this district extending to the east to take in Tulare County minus Vice, the city of Visalia and the city of Tulare. And so, um, uh, appreciate the letter. It sounds like they are listening. Um, uh, this map, as much as it changed last week, could change again, but, uh, I'm keeping an eye on that. Uh, I know there's a number of Kings County people, um, getting on these, um, Zoom, uh, hearings and monitoring the commission and, uh, monitoring, uh, these maps. So, um, thanks for weighing in. Most are very happy to, uh, let folks know that, uh, my annual Operation Gobble, uh, turkey distribution event is going to take place. Um, thanks to some dedicated sponsors. So come Monday, November 22nd, and Tuesday, November 23rd, we'll be doing, um, hundreds of turkeys again and providing a Thanksgiving meal, uh, uh, to folks in Kings County and Home Garden, Kettleman City, um, Avonale and, and the city of Corcoran. Um, I also want to just, uh, report that, um, last night, I was a guest speaker for the Kings Tulare Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. Um, uh, and, and I appreciate them inviting me to, uh, come on their Zoom chat and, um, talk about issues that are affecting, uh, our San Joaquin Valley. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hey, thank you, Supervisor Valley. Supervisor Nev?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, last week, uh, the Housing Authority had a special meeting, uh, held on Wednesday, uh, kind of wrapped up, uh, 2021, and hopefully that'll be the final meeting of this year with everything being settled, I hope. Uh, attended the Kings County Farm Bureau webinar on COVID information. I want to thank Dusty and AgSafe and, and the Health Department for all, uh, bringing that information to the ag community. Also, the Small Business Development Center in Lance, uh, the Workforce Development Board. Um, all job development and economic development, and it was well-attended. So thank everyone that, uh, put that together. At the CART meeting, uh, we approved, uh, the Public Meeting Assembly Bill, uh, 361 in response to COVID. Uh, as we've talked about in the past, this, this, uh, bill was somewhat problematic, and, uh, we continue to work through some of those issues. Um, but we did, uh, kind of combine the November, December to a December 8th special meeting, uh, due to the holidays, and we'll work around the AB 361 problems. Um, also approved the Amtrak Integration Study, MOU, um, authorized the executive director to apply for a competitive grant for the Transit Center. Um, we also looked at and approved the, uh, purchase of a Uber mobility platform to enhance, um, our, our system, and hopefully we'll get that online. It'll probably, it'll be after, after the holidays, probably in early 2022. Um, we also approved the holiday schedule, and, uh, we also extended the College of Sequoias Transit Agreement that we've been in place for about 10 years now. Um, one year at a time. And, uh, we also, um, approved the purchase of an electric vehicle charging from Turnkey. At, uh, the Association of Governments, we, uh, reviewed the 2022 Regional Transportation Improvement Act and held a public hearing. Uh, that, that, uh, public comment period will, will remain open through the holidays, and hopefully will get adopted in January, uh, working on the, uh, overall work program. Um, also, uh, they also had to approve the Amtrak Integration Study. Um, also heard an update, uh, from Caltrans on the, uh, 41 corridor between Elkhorn and Excelsior. Mostly, it's all in Fresno County. Uh, that's a $68 million project. Um, most of the funding's in place, uh, and hopefully they have a, uh, 2024, 2025 fiscal year start. And we also moved the, uh, the November, December, uh, meeting for a special date of December 8th, and also having to work around the AB 361, uh, issues. Um, I, I want to thank staff and everyone that, uh, came out for the, uh, county Halloween, uh, activities. It was a very nice, uh, very much scaled back, but, uh, still a very nice event, and, uh, certainly want to thank everybody, and, uh, I'm sure all the dentists appreciate it with all the sweet stuff that was going out around and everything else. Um, wrapped up the, uh, um, regular football season, um, announcing freshman JV on Thursday. Even though the Tigers lost to Hanford on Friday, they were still seeded, uh, seventh, uh, in the Central Section Division II playoffs, and will host Mission Prep, uh, from San Luis Obispo, uh, this Friday. So we look forward to that game. West Hills College, uh, season continued, so had a couple, had a one makeup game, uh, against Merced, and then a regular, uh, regular scheduled game against Taff. Uh, there are only four more games remaining in the regular season. Um, and look forward to seeing the Golden Eagles, um, wrap up their, uh, career, uh, their, uh, schedule. Uh, the Lemoore Recreation held a downtown trick-or-treat in downtown Lemoore on Saturday. It was very well-attended. A lot of nice, uh, nice, uh, activities going on, uh, there. And, uh, my granddaughter was able to get her American Farmer degree in Indianapolis this past week. So with that, thank you very much.
Very good. Thank Supervisor Nevs. Supervisor Fagundes.
Well, I had some learning to keep my mouth shut because I've had to extend dental, dental work this last week, and it's not the candy that done it, but anyway, I'm still having issues with it, so hopefully I can get my, my vocabulary back in, in order here before short time. With that, thank you.
You're doing just fine, sir. You sound just fine.
Yeah, very good. Okay, we'll move to, everyone have anything this, this afternoon or this morning? Move to board correspondence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For board correspondence, Fish and Game, they have a save the date for listening session and discussion on Commission's Justice Equity Diversity and Inclusion Plan that will be held November 17th, 2021, from 4:30 to 6:30 via Zoom. For upcoming meetings and events, fourth redistricting public hearing will be held tomorrow, November 3rd at 6:15 in the board chambers here. The Battle of the Badges Blood Drive, November 22nd, in the parking lot by Human Services, starts at 9:00 AM. For upcoming agenda items, admin has a claim for damages. Health has three items, the monoclonal antibody therapy pilot project, disease intervention specialist workforce development funding, and licensed vocational nurse or LVN position in the Health Department. Bureau of Health, we bring in an agreement with Creative Alternatives for short-term residential treatment program services. Human Services has a new job specification for senior personnel technician, and I'm sorry, I said human services, I meant human resources. Human Services has two items, Housing Navigator Program Application Resolution and a Transitional Housing Program Application Resolution. That concludes board correspondence, upcoming meetings, and upcoming agenda items.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions? Wish like that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, tomorrow for the 6:15, will you be here physically or virtually?
I think combination.
Combination?
Okay. Well, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep. Okay, at this point, we do have closed session remaining. Other items as well, the 11 o'clock California Public Finance Authority regular meeting, I think has been canceled. And as was mentioned earlier, we do have the fourth public hearing. Redistricting will be held November 3rd, 2021 at 6:30. And so back to the closed session, we do have numerous items. Conference with Labor Negotiator, meet and confer, Government Code Section 54957.6. That will be Blue Collar, SEIU. Then we have personnel, another item, Personnel Matter, Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Appointment, Director of Finance. Next issue is Personnel Matter, Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Appointment, County Council. And then we have litigation initially, initiated formally, and that is Fagundes versus Kings County, Government Code Section 54956.91. We have another item, Significant Exposure to Litigation, One Case, Government Code Section 54956.92E3. And so with that, is there any further information to come before the board at this time? Right? Hearing none, we will move to closed session and our next regularly scheduled, or the redistricting meeting on Wednesday evening. So thanks for everybody for attending, and we'll move to closed session now. Meeting adjourned.